Being 7:02, I will call the Common Council meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Iverson.
Here.
Schatzinger.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Gallus.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Gottske. Sorenson.
Here.
Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Reverend Jeffrey Dodson. Please be with me in spirit of prayer this evening. Holy One, thank you for the joy of gathering together as leaders of the city of Ripon. We pray tonight for our community, its people, our businesses, schools, social services, and elected officials. We give thanks for the diversity of perspectives present tonight and for the whole community of Ripon. We pray you will guide our leaders, strengthen our bond and commitment to one another, and imbue us with the love of neighbor and the manner that Jesus Christ taught, that we may be good Samaritans to one another. Bless our learners as our young ones go back to school, for the new students and returning students who come to Ripon College to begin a new semester. Bless our helpers who put their lives on the front lines of our community, our police and law enforcement, emergency medical personnel, and firefighters, and the support staff who watch over them. Let all of us be courageous in the work of making Ripon a good place to live and work and learn. Watch over our city of Ripon tonight, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is our motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Howard, seconded by Doug. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. All right, coming into public comment, this is the opportunity for citizens to come before the council with comments and concerns on any current city issue, knowing no action will be taken tonight. I ask that you keep it civil and respectful and within five minutes. However, discussion of personnel or individual members of the common council shall not be permitted. I expect you to be respectful, and in return, I expect the council to treat the citizens with the same respect. Remember, before you begin, please state your name and address for the record. First person we have is Aaron Keen.
Kane.
Kane?
I didn't realize I was going first. City Council.
Please state your name.
Aaron Kane, 143 Stonehedge Court, Ripon, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
City Council, Mayor, City Administrator, the Attorney. First time being here, so if I'm a little bit nervous, a little bit shaky, please understand that. But I wanted to bring up and discuss the ever-popular subject around the area, the ATV/UTV routes within the city of Ripon. Township of Ripon, as you know, or Town of Ripon has opened their routes or roads, select routes, and marked that, and now we have a north-to-south connecting between the townships and other areas that are open. Understand, this has been a controversial subject. At one point in time, the city of Ripon had asked the question, you know, why would we do this? We would be on an island because no one around us has opened. That since is reversed, kind of a 180. The island is now Ripon because, as noted, Pickett, Rosendale, Brandon, Fairwater, Eureka, Princeton, Montello, even the cities of Berleyn, Wapon, Foxlake, Markers' Anne, Winnicott, Amro, and Watoma are all opening, along with 39 of our 72 counties in the state of Wisconsin have completely opened. So greater areas, obviously, Town of Berleyn, Aurora, Napuscombe, other areas like Rushford, Seneca, Green Lake County, and so on, and so on, even Winnebago County have now opened. If anyone goes on a map, the WA TV Association, Wisconsin ATV/UTV Association, and looks at a map with routes, Ripon has a bullseye over it, and that's because the city of Ripon is not open. I understand that there has been concerns in the past with noise, having an ordinance written or not having an ordinance written. I do have quite a bit of information available to the council. I can leave this with anybody, I can speak to it, but currently, as of August this year, there's approximately 500,000 registered vehicles, ATV and UTV in the state of Wisconsin. And alone last year, they brought in $7.2 million in registration. That's just registering these vehicles. There is a working capital budget for this year of $18 million, and 7.2 of that is set aside for trails, updates, signage, anything a club, a city, or anybody would apply for as grant money. I have spoke to a number of business owners around the area, on all ends of the town and city, I should say city, not town, because that's what we're talking about. Webster's Roadhouse, Integerty, the Sweet and Salty franchise that we now have two in town, a number of these business owners are looking for the greater good. It's the greater good of the city of Ripon to have something like this happen. I, myself, a resident in Ripon since 1995, and ATV-er, UTV-er since day one, I went 32 miles away from Ripon the other night for ice cream with my kid and my wife in the UTV, only because I couldn't go to Sweet and Salty. I went eight miles south to Fairwater to get gas, because I couldn't use any of the local gas stations here. I made a choice. Our world is based on choices. You guys are all making choices to be here and represent, hopefully, the people, not personal agendas, of the city of Ripon. So I want to ask the council, what is in our way, as a city, to getting the city opened? The ordinance that I've heard rumor is already written, may or may not be written, for the city, and put that into place and open up the city. Is it the negative connotation that the group of individuals that own these machines bring? Because myself, some of the individuals sitting in here have spent a lot of money on these machines. They're not your, all your 1980s three-wheelers that you're going to be running up and down the street with exhaust and making loud noise and upsetting people. But again, I don't own a Harley, and I think that does that to a number of us here when you stand outside and listen to a Harley go down the street. So I'm just trying to educate myself, educate the council, and ask for some type of committee or something that the residents that are sitting in the back of the room can work with and help get the city of Ripon off this island. So questions or anything of the council, or I don't know the regular procedures after this, Mayor?
No, that's your time.
Okay.
We don't.
Fortunately, Kane.
Don't discuss it this time.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
This could lead to it being on the agenda, and then we can.
Yeah.
Certainly debate it.
Yes, that would be my request.
Yeah, and that is your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm taking my pen.
Next is Dave Schmidt. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Dave Schmidt. I live in the city of Oshkosh, but I represent the Fox River Wheelers ATV Club and also WATFA, the State ATV Association. I'm here with Aaron today to offer some information about ATV routes within your community and the impact it could have economically. This is the fastest-growing sport in the state of Wisconsin, and it's family-driven. Businesses are all looking for economic growth, and this is a great way to do that. Your average owner is in their 40s. These machines average about $30,000 apiece. These are not, you know, the people that, in the past, have gone out and tore things up. And WATFA, the state organization, we're very much in educating people on safety, riding responsibly. We work with the Department of Tourism, we work with the DNR, we work with the local clubs to make sure that the routings are safe. Why do we come to Ripon? We don't have off-road trails in central Wisconsin like we do in northern Wisconsin, so we depend on road routes. That requires a little bit different tactic. Why do we seek routes through cities? Because the fastest-growing part of this sport is overlanding. People communicating, commuting from one area to the next, staying in hotels, visiting restaurants, buying fuel, stopping in stores, adding tax dollars to your community. That's what this is about. We can ride anywhere. We have 46,000 miles of trails and routes in the state of Wisconsin, some of the best there are. There's over 6,000 miles of winter roads and trails. And right now, Ripon is one of those small parts in the state that have kind of, like Aaron mentioned, kind of gotten isolated because we haven't been able to figure out what we need to do to solve that. We'd like to seek an ad hoc committee to work out whatever details need to be done to help you pass your ordinance. If that can be done in the future, we'd certainly be willing to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I believe it's Jeff Blackburn.
I'm Jeff Blackburn. I live on 553 Hall Street, Ripon. These two gentlemen pretty much summed up what I had to say and what I've presented in the past. Just as a resident, I would definitely be somebody that would use the system. I'd be able to commute around to things, ride to work, stuff like that. So definitely a benefit for me. Probably would get me out and do things I normally wouldn't do normally. So, and I think that I can speak for a lot of other people that would feel the same way. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Chad Ritter?
Ritter.
Ritter?
Chad Ritter, I'm from Wapon. I'm totally against ATVs. No, I'm lying, because all of you know me because I've been here before. So I'm with the Wapon Area Club, the Country Roads ATV Club. Again, I know that you've all heard me before. I've, you know, said a lot of the things that the other folks have said. It is growing. Dodge County just opened all of their county roads. The city of Wapon, where I live, has been open now for a couple of years. I've got a couple of guys that are good friends of mine that are on the council. I can tell you that the police chief was absolutely against it, and he will tell you now he has no problem with it, because all the problems that they suspected they were going to have, they just didn't have them. They had some learning curves right in the beginning, some people that didn't know all the rules that they needed to follow, so they did have to do some education, but they said it was way more about education than it was about citations, because most of the stuff that was going on just didn't lend itself to citing them. It led them to educating those folks. And since then, they just don't have a problem with it. But I can tell you that every day in Wapon, there are ATVs and UTVs at the local businesses, every day. They're at the grocery store, they're at the restaurants, they're at the hardware store. They are there. Every day you'll see them. The other day, you know, kind of like what was mentioned over here, I can ride in Wapon, but the other day, just for fun, my wife and I went from Wapon to Foxlake, had a malt at the malt shop, went up to Fairwater, had a soda at the bar up there, and then we went to Walker's and had fish for supper. So we, you know, we went to three different communities, three different restaurants, or, you know, that day, just to get out and take a ride. And I think a lot of the people that live in Ripon would like to have that same opportunity, but now they can't because they'd have to trailer. One of the things I talked about before, some of these people that are in town, you know, they used to trailer their machines up to northern Wisconsin, but they've maybe gotten to the age where they just can't do that anymore. A guy spoke at one of the meetings that I was at about that and said that he really wanted to be able to ride in his community, because he was just too old to be able to put that big machine onto a trailer and travel up north to do the riding, and he really wanted to be able to just get on his, him and his wife in their UTV, and they wanted to be able to go ride in the area that they live. We have almost all of the townships in Fond du Lac County open, and obviously the Town of Fond du Lac not. The only one left, really, is Springvale, and it's our understanding that they have an ordinance in the works to open. And pretty much all of Fond du Lac County is going to be open to ATVs for the townships. It's a great way for people to be able to get out, spend money in your businesses, and most of all, have something that they can do with their families that's positive. So again, like I asked the last time, I'd just like to have, you know, one of you folks ask that this be taken off of the table so that it can be discussed, and maybe we can get something done. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to accepting informal reports from standing committees and staff. If there's no objections to the list, if anyone would like to make a motion to approve as published.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Got moved by David, seconded by Paige. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. And again, same thing for the consent calendar. If anyone would like to make a motion to approve that as published.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And moved by John, and seconded by Paige. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent calendar is approved. All right, we have a proclamation this evening. This is for the 2022 International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas drug abuse and addiction impact quality of life across Wisconsin negatively affecting the health, relationships, and livelihoods of residents throughout our state and community, and potentially leading to severe injury or death from an overdose, and whereas many, though not all, drug overdoses in the United States and in Wisconsin are related to the use of opioids, such as heroin, fentanyl, and prescription oxycodone, and whereas according to the most recent data available from Wisconsin Department of Health Services, Wisconsin had over, or has over, 6,845 drug overdose deaths, and whereas the city of Ripon recognizes the stigma and discrimination associated with substance abuse disorders and addiction must be addressed so no one ever feels shame from struggling for having overdosed or for asking for help. And whereas the city of Ripon recognizes the importance of spreading awareness about how to identify an opioid overdose and what to do in the event of an overdose, which includes attending Fond du Lac County Health Department's free community Narcan Training Program, and whereas the last day of August is recognized worldwide as a day to remember those who have lost, to remember those we have lost to drug overdose, to acknowledge the grief of their families, friends, and communities, and to act to reduce the stigma of drug-related deaths. And whereas everyone can save a life by educating themselves on the signs of an overdose, learning how to administer the emergency narcotic overdose reversal drug, naloxone?
Naloxone.
Thank you, naloxone, and calling 911. Now, therefore, I, Theodore Grant, Mayor of the city of Ripon, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2022, as International Overdose Awareness Day throughout the city of Ripon, and I commend this observance to all resident, all our residents. Reclaim this day, 22nd of August, 2022. Would there be a motion to approve this?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ellen, seconded by Paige. Any discussion?
I would just like to remind people that if you are struggling, there are resources available, both within the county and here as well. There's also local AA meetings almost every night of the week, NA. Please, if you're struggling, reach out for help. You're not alone, and together we can, we can help those who need it most.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, I'm still going to ask permission of the city to set up the purple chair and the purple light in remembrance of the people we have lost this coming week for the National Overdose Awareness Day, so, but I will be asking for, you know, permission.
Thank you.
May I do it, Adam?
Sure.
Thank you.
I feel so proud to be part of a city where city leaders state out loud that there is help in this community, in this county, related to addictions of all sorts. And so I also want to add my voice to that as well, and say that for those that haven't done the Narcan training in a while, I did it pre-pandemic, and at that time, I had the needles, and just recently, I met with someone to do a new Narcan training, and now it's as simple as, you know, through the nasal that they have. And the training went from maybe 45 minutes to just a few minutes. So the next time we have one in Ripon, I would say, please watch for that or contact the county for where those are located, and it really can help save a life by being trained for that. I assume, actually, now that I say this, that we do have Narcan here at City Hall, but if we do not, that is something that after the meeting, I'd like to consult with someone on.
Yeah.
Super.
PD and EMS, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I assume so, and I guess, can we, so we heard that for the record.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chiefs and Medical, for having that Narcan.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you. All right, moving into our regular agenda items, first is pay application number four for the Senior Activity Center Trailhead Project. This is a payment of $331,884, or $848.96 to Harmony Construction.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by David, seconded by Howard. Any discussion?
Yeah, it's a good question. Go ahead. Semi-related to this, about how long is the approximate completion date?
Ahead of schedule at this point.
Tomorrow?
No, no, no.
Once.
No, no. I believe October 4th is the, October 1st, around that point, but we are, we're a little ahead of schedule at this point. I think the only thing that would really delay anything are some of the, like, AV equipment or some of that more technical stuff, but generally speaking, we are, from a construction standpoint, we are ahead of schedule.
Okay.
You're going to jinx it if you keep saying.
We're ahead enough that if it, we're still good. We're, we're good.
There was a crew up there Sunday working.
See, even more ahead.
And it looks like the road will still be under construction before, you know, with the start of school.
That's untrue. The road will be paved by the end of this week. That is the schedule.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
What did you say?
By the end of this week.
Great.
They hope to be there to fix that all up, because their teachers are having in service, so that'll be done at the end of the week, before school.
Great.
Should be. Weather-dependent.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving pay application number four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Next is the pay application number six for the Vermont Street and Parkway Terrace Reconstruction Project. This is for $158,149.72, going to James Peterson Sons, Inc. It's hard to say. Is there a motion to approve this pay application?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Howard, seconded by Doug. Any discussion on this one? I do have one question. Is this the final?
This is the final pay application, so this will close out everything from retainage, everything else on the project, so it will be the last done.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving pay application number six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, next, moving into outdoor open container entertainment event permit application. This first one is for Ripon Main Street, applying for September 2nd, going along with their fi, is this their final concert of the year, I believe, for Hinder at the Village Green?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And moved by Howard, seconded by Paige. Any discussion on this? I'll just say to the public that Craig Tivon from Main Street could not be with us tonight, but he did contact myself, as well as several other council members, to explain, and the application also does a clear job of that as well. They're just expecting a large crowd, therefore wanting to close the streets and expand the venue to go into half of the 400 block of Watson Street and half of the 300 block of Seward Street. And this is something we've done before, at least the street closure part of it. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this outdoor open container entertainment event permit application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next, we have another outdoor open container entertainment event permit application. This one is submitted by Ripon Area Chamber of Commerce for September 17th, in conjunction with Septemberfest, and we do have Mandy here, if anyone has any questions on this application, or if anyone would like to make a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Paige, seconded by Doug.
I was going to second it.
I heard him before I saw your hand.
You gotta be quick on that tonight.
I guess.
And does anyone have any questions or comments?
I would like to thank Mandy for listening closely to the businesses in the downtown area regarding this application. This application is an exemplary document for best practices for alcohol use.
Thank you. She appreciates the comment as well. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this outdoor All those in favor of approving this outdoor open container entertainment event permit application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Mandy. Thank you, council. Next, an agreement between the City of Ripon and Ripon Chamber of Commerce for Tourism Promotion and Tourism Development Services. Adam, would you like to give a brief overview?
Yeah, I can give a brief overview. Mandy is here as well, too. So while reviewing things with Mandy and, and some of the transitions at the chamber, we recognize that the current room tax agreement was expiring at the end of this year. So instead of trying to recreate the wheel of rush to do something different, we are recommending sort of an extension of the previous agreement. Generally speaking, what occurs here is the city collects room tax from hotel stays. Seventy percent of that is then forwarded to the Ripon Chamber of Commerce to, to use for what is statutorily required as a tourism entity, to promote tourism, promote events, promote just anything Ripon that basically puts heads in beds. That's the whole concept. There are things in there that they have to do, if you read in there, that keep us compliant with the state statute, including just some reporting things, membership on their board, so on and so forth. And then we also do have some other, you know, just language in there, you know, them coming and talking to us a little bit more about what they're doing to make sure that they are indeed spending the money, you know, to the city's satisfaction and in compliance with the state statute. Mandy, you can certainly talk about whatever you want to with it. This is a one-year deal. The reason for that is, A, because we want to get back on track with this, so it's kind of a test year to make sure that things continue to operate according to this agreement as well as to statute, and B, just the timing side of things. We wanted to get this done and in front of you ahead of the start of the new year.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll, I'll make a motion as a old former chamber executive, to accept this, this resolution.
Thank you. Moved by Ellen, seconded by Jolene. Any discussion or questions?
I'd like to invite Mandy up, if there is anything she would like to say with this. I don't specifically have questions, but if there is anything since you're here that you'd like to share.
Thank you. Well, it's such a joy just to be here. I've always really appreciated and admired the work that you do, but I think the more inner workings I come into, understanding what the city does, the more I'm just in awe and speechless and feel tired for you guys. But really, I'm just excited to work closely. I've met with Adam a lot, a lot of you, chief governors, everybody I can, to really learn more about what the chamber has been doing, how we can do it better, how we can continue to promote Ripon for all that live here and work here and visit here. And so, yeah, I really take this agreement seriously, so does our board, and we're just going to keep using, working on this to be as most compliant, but also just do it very well and, and work very closely with the city. And so, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm sure I'll be up here again, so, look forward. Yeah. Thanks, Mandy.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Anyone questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, moving on to a resolution for 2021 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Jeremy, would you like to give a overview of what this report is for?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
So pretty much, the Compliance Maintenance Agreement reviews what the city established in the CMOM, I believe in 2014, and it's, I guess, pretty much a report card of how the wastewater plant functioned over the last year. As far as dischargers go, the wastewater plant was great. We got As in every category for BODs and all of the pollutants discharged. The only two knocks that we got were our sludge application and our financial section. For sludge application, we overapplied onto a field that we should not have in consecutive years, and that was, I guess, a lack of oversight on many people's parts, I guess. The improvement to, or I guess the fix of that would be, I guess, look for more fields and actively search for those fields and farmers who would be willing to accept our sludge on their fields. The other big knock was the financial section, which was pretty much summing up that the wastewater utility cannot pay for its expenses, I guess, on a year-to-year basis. That's about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Can we, can we ask questions?
If I have answers, yeah.
Questions or if anyone would like to make a motion? If you have a question, go ahead.
Well, you mentioned the sludge with the fields, because it was a field you weren't supposed to. Is that because it's too close to danger of runoff, or because, what is the situation there?
What happened there was, we had partially applied on the field the year before, and the maintenance manager and prior superintendent made the decision to reapply on that field in a consecutive year. Then when I was doing the CMAR, I take all the calculations of the nutrients that went onto the field, and it's, it adds up over time, I guess, as far as consecutive applications. And based on those calculations, we overapplied nitrogen, and then that risk runs as far as runoff, yes.
Point of order. Should we have a motion and a second on the floor prior to discussing?
We can, but I allow the discussion.
Okay. Are you going to continue to allow the discussion?
It has worked well.
Okay.
It helps craft the motion, although this would be a straightforward motion. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion.
To approve this.
I heard her make the motion. Would you like to second?
Yes, I would like to.
All right, thank you. So moved by Ellen, seconded by Doug. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Jeremy. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, next is a resolution authorizing limited bow hunting within city limits. This is one we take up pretty much every year. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Moved by David, seconded by Doug. Any discussion?
Yes.
One second, Doug. I saw her first.
Just on the resolution itself, the January 31st, 2023, instead of 2022. Yep. Sorry, I hate being the nitpicky.
Oh, it's fine.
But that, that was going back in time, so.
Do you need a motion to approve that?
Friendly amendment is fine.
I'm making a motion to approve that as a friendly amendment, changing it to January 31st, 2023.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Seconder. Good.
Okay. All right, so this will correct the typo on the date on resolution. Good catch.
Yeah, never mind. I do have a question.
Go ahead.
My question is regarding what land in the city is being bow hunted. Do we have area, region?
Yeah, so.
That's never been clear to me.
Yeah, so it's the city garage area, so back there where we owned by the dump site, and there's a, I think the shooting range is down there, and the city owns some land kind of in the marshy area back there, so that's an area. And then up on Stonehedge Court is the other area. So they don't have a ton of sites, they're looking for other sites, but they have to clearly be aware of their surroundings and can't be, you know, doing this in parks and, you know, on private property that they're not allowed to. So these are the areas that they have identified, and I think they may mention it in here, but, you know, they can't, they can't feed and bait, but they, I think, also are looking for more hunting locations, particularly around Murray Park, Kiwanis Park, and Ripon College. But, you know, if, we don't really want people in parks shooting bows and killing deer.
We had that problem when it first started.
So it's pretty targeted in terms of where they go, but there's not always deer there.
Now, private landowners can contact this group and offer them their land, so if there happens to be someone who owns land over by Union Street, by the college area, whatever, they could, they could call and say, hey, they're eating my flowers, come, come take care of it.
I would assume all the standard hunting regulations, distance from house, distance from road.
Yep.
All that still apply.
Exactly.
But it really does limit where they can actually operate in town.
Yep.
That's a good point, though. We shouldn't maybe assume that. That should be stated in next year's resolution, that all other standard, you know, what you just said, needs to be followed.
Well, those are all state laws, which the city can't override a state law.
Right. I still think it would be clear next time to state it in the resolution.
Any further questions or discussion?
My fellow colleague mentioned that you can contact them. There isn't, would they contact our city administrator to get that contact?
And then, Adam would forward that on to Craig.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the resolution for authorizing limited bow hunting within city limits, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next is a resolution for inclusion under the Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program. Adam?
All right, so what you have in front of you is a resolution for the inclusion under the Wisconsin Public Employee Group Health Insurance Program. Sorry. So I wanted to kind of take a step back, tell you kind of what we've been working on, why this is in front of you, and what decision has to be made tonight. So the state of Wisconsin, through the Employee Trust Fund, offers a state health plan. We currently are not in the state health plan. We are current, this is for health insurance, we currently work through Anthem, through Visance, and have a high deductible health plan with an HRA with a broad network. So this is kind of the overall plan design. It's, this is just sort of, just giving you a kind of an idea of what we're currently paying for employee, employee spouse, employee child, and then full family. We did increase the employee share last year to be 100, 150, 150, and 200, as well as, we, we made the change to have like a broader HRA to cover the plan design, which includes a $6,000 deductible and some pretty high maximum out of pockets. If you don't, if you weren't here or don't remember last year, basically, we got to a point in, around November, that there was going to be a 49% increase in health insurance premiums for the city. At that point, we had to make a decision, and we were not accepted by other providers to even give a rate, you know, to even quote us because of the general risk and general cost of our pool, okay? So we were in a bad spot, to the point where we had to move to the current plan we are at, which is, is going well. The plan ended up being designed very well, but we are trying to avoid this constant pressure of increases. We are projecting, you know, approximately a 10% increase again for the coming year on the current plan. That could be anywhere from 6% up to 12%, up to 23%. We have no idea, and we won't know for a while. So the difference between last year and this year, at this point in time, is we have worked to at least have the option of the state health plan, okay? This is a six-month process that it takes to join, so we were able to learn from last year and better prepare. So what is the state health plan? State health plan is run by the ETF. All WRS-eligible employees are, in local government, are eligible if you participate. So the Wisconsin retirement system, that's WRS, this is a tail off of the WRS, so it's, it's part of the Employee Trust Fund. And everybody that is WRS-eligible, under our, under our current plan with the state, would be eligible for health insurance. What that would change in our current structure is that part-time employees would be, part-time eligible, part-time WRS-eligible employees would become eligible for health insurance, okay? So it does broaden the number of employees that are eligible for health insurance. That number is around 64, so we have 64 WRS-eligible employees. The majority of that are those, vast majority, are full-time employees. As an employer, we have to get to 65% participation rate of WRS-eligible employees. So that is a number and something that we may go through this entire process with the state health plan, and if we don't get to 65%, we are not in, okay? So that is something that we have to monitor, look at. Right now, we would be a little short in terms of the numbers of getting to 65, but we need to work on that, educate employees, so on and so forth. The process for enrolling, at minimum, takes four months, so we go to underwriting, so we have done that. We are now at the council resolution, selecting the program option, that's tonight, and then enrolling employees once that selection is made, and then processing enrollment. So by around November 1st, we will have a good idea of where we stand for coverage effective the first of the year, okay? So this plan is, is generally very different than, than our current plan. It's, it is kind of a local option for local governments that is offered by the state. These are what the state, the state health plan, it's called the state health plan because all state employees are in this plan. That is what they offer if you go to work for DNR, DOT, all of that stuff. So the idea here is, we're getting a larger pool of people, okay, to, to spread that health insurance risk over, but they do underwriting because they don't want to just bring in anybody and have them ruin the pool, right? So we went to underwriting, which was a delight, and we got a notification about a week ago, week and a half ago, stating, you get the biggest surcharge to participate. And the reason, claims experience and risk of your group is much higher than the average in our program. So they said, for the first year, 40% for the first 12 months, so that's a 320 single, $320 per single plan and $800 per family contract. The good news is, year two, it goes to 20, cuts in half. Year three, it goes away. Be the first time ever we probably see a reduction in healthcare costs, okay? So getting into this program, there will be pain in, in year one in terms of overall costs, but this is the experience we have had in the open market with every, every health insurance provider. So the ETF saw that as well, and they said, if you want in, you're going to have to pay more, okay? So underwriting has been completed, and we are now at a point where we are looking at program options. Now, the state health plan is broken down into the program and then the plan. The program is, there are four options. We would be talking about options without dental, so we would be looking at option 12, 14, 16, 17. So there's the traditional, the deductible, the local, and the high deductible health plan, and then they have their own prescription drug plan on the side. The traditional plan, as you can see, is your most expensive, and you can kind of just see kind of a snapshot of what it, what the program entails. So deductible, there's no deductible, I mean, this is your highest-tier plan. Your deductible plan, or 14, is a little less money, $500,000 family deductible, which is significantly less than our $6,000, $12,000 now. And after that, there's office pay, none, co-insurance after deductible, none, so on and so forth. The local option is just sort of a, instead of having a higher deductible, you have a lower deductible, but you have office copays and you have co-insurance after deductible of 10%. So just a little bit of a tweak, a little difference. And then the high deductible health plan is the lowest-cost plan, a little bit higher deductible again, and then you have your office pay, your office visits, so on and so forth, kind of similar, but the thing there is, is you have to offer an A- thing there is, is you have to offer an HSA. That has to have an HSA rider, so that, you know, adds cost to the program because it is a high deductible health plan. So we would be required to set that up. Prescription drugs are all the same, 5, 20%, 40%, $50 for the certain levels. So that's a little bit nicer than our current plan. So tonight, we will be talking about what program, okay? Because ultimately, how this changes for the employee and the employer is the percentage that an employee covers, okay? One of the main reasons that it's been discussed to me why the city never went to the state health plan was because of the 88-12% coverage match, or the premium share. So employees would have to start paying 12% for their health insurance, and nobody ever wanted to do that. Well, the fact is, is at this point with the cost of all this, last year, we showed that we had to increase that contribution, and moving to this program, that contribution percentage would increase again. 88-12, what that boils back down to is Act 10, which happened over 10 years ago now, I believe. So basically, we have flexibility within that table, but most people default to the 88-12% for their full-time employees. Part-time employees, so anybody that's WRS-eligible that is considered part-time, we pay 25% to 50%. So we set that amount based on whatever we decide. So, so plan design is a lot nicer, and we'll sort of get into costs here. Any questions about just, before we get to numbers, about kind of what we're talking about, or yes?
I have lots of questions, but can I make the motion to put it on the floor, or?
No, I would wait, I would ask questions and then make a motion after all the questions are done.
Two questions. What are you doing for prevention right now? Because these numbers indicate that we have a high amount of usage, and I'm wondering what the prevention program is for the city.
A prevention program? So what I would say is, we do have a program where employee, it was an employee health program that we work through the local provider here to offer employees resources for things. Ultimately, utilization is one component. The reason this has gotten out of control is not because of mass utilization, it's because of high-cost claims from a handful of members, okay? So we've had some significant claim dollars come against the plan, and our current Anthem plan, it has driven up the cost. The majority of people are not utilizing this at some obscene rate. This is a couple cases, isolated incidents of significant high-cost claims. So a total of probably five to eight claims that range from anywhere over $50,000 to over $1 million.
Correct. And that's typical for any public health, any public entity. I've dealt with this for years. But, but, and you're always going to have that population because genetics are genetics. But many times, if in a prevention, a wellness prevention program, you can intercede earlier and help people stay healthier longer, you're still going to have high-cost claims. There's no way you're ever, ever going to avoid that. But prevention can, it costs a little bit more on the, and you know this, on the front end, and then hopefully, on the other end, we can have some savings because we have a higher, healthier workforce and a productive workforce. And we want them to be healthy, and we want them to have a good quality of life.
And from the standpoint, you know, Anthem does offer a wellness plan. We don't have, I think, many people active in it. It's something that they do not do very well in our current plan. We do not pay for anything else outside of that in terms of a wellness plan. We do not do surveys or surcharges for individuals that may use nicotine or smoke. There are a lot of things we could do that could change the, you know, change the dynamic of some of this, but that's always been met with some resistance and/or, you know, we kind of kick that to our provider of the health insurance plan, like Anthem, a wellness plan. We're not, that is available for everybody to use. They can download, do workouts, things like that, and get rewarded for it. Obviously, there are certain things in the plan that are designed for preventative things that are covered, but getting to the heart of the issue is going to take a heck of a lot more education, obviously, and putting things in front of employees and getting them to buy into that. And that is something that culturally, I don't think we have done a well enough job at. At the same time, when we look at the data, the high-cost claims are the big thing right now.
Right.
And, and the age and demographic that we are covering.
If you wanted to put an ad hoc committee together to look at wellness and health prevention, I would be willing to sit on that committee, as I've done this in three different communities and had some fairly decent success. Now, my second question is, you said you have to have an HSA, which is a health savings account?
You are correct.
I don't like those because those are portable. They're not open to health risk accounts, so that the money stays with the municipality when employment is terminated?
You are correct, and that is why we will discuss what route to go in a second here. And the high deductible health plan with the HSA, yes. If that route was gone, if we went that route, that's why we currently have an HRA, a health reimbursement arrangement, because that is funded by the city and it stays with the city. An HSA, if someone were to hit January 1st, and they left the organization, they could take that money with them.
Yep. I don't like that one. Those are my questions.
Any other questions about the current discussion or the current information? Okay. So when we then look at, what is this going to cost? We have option P12, option one, which is the traditional plan. So if you go back and you remember, that's this guy right here all the way to the end with the no-dollar deductible, so this just kind of follows this sheet here. P12, so what happens in this plan? All of these, I would say, plan providers, Dean Health, Network Health, Quartz, all of them could rate us individually on a commercial line. Last year, they said, "Thanks, no thanks," okay? They all declined, all of these. These are the qualifying Fond du Lac County healthcare plans offered by Dean Network, so on and so forth. There's a tier one and a tier three. How this gets calculated is your total premium for your two qualifying average tier-one plan, so your, your average of that times 88%. That is the maximum the city pays. The rest is, is on the employee, okay? So for example, on the top plan, if somebody wanted Dean Health Plan as a single, they'd go at $130.63. If they wanted Network Health, it'd be $167.33. You then get into larger networks and larger provider networks and more choice potentially in the tier-three sites or tier-three plans. So Quartz, Robin, so on and so forth. Those would be a significant increase because they are a more costly plan. But the city is at a maximum employer share of 88% of the average qualifying tier-one plans for the county they are in. So that's how the math kind of spills out. In this case, what we have done, Amanda is here, she can explain how she did this magic, but we took the current rates from the state, added what they believe is going to be about an 8% increase, and then we added the surcharge amount, $800 into the calculation. So that's how they would calculate out everything. When we are looking at our current health plan, the projected increase in our current plan of 10% takes us to about a $1.153 million spend for 2023. Based on our current makeup of what would happen, everybody that is paying for an employee spouse or employee child that would be paying 150 would have to make the decision to go to single or go to family because there is no more middle tiers, okay? So you're only offering single, and you're only offering family. The best plan out there, if you took the least expensive option, is Dean Health Plan, $321.99. So that is the top-tier plan, and so that goes from a family plan of 200 to $320 and at $1.99. If somebody wanted Robin, they would pay $1233.08. You then get to tier option two, P14, which is a little less money. So in, in option one, we project saving about $13,000 by moving to the state health plan with the 10% increase. These are all projections. We don't know. It could be more, it could be less, but these are, this is where we're at today with the projection of a 10% increase. Right now, we project P14 to be around a $69,760 savings to the city. And the plan design there is the one with a little bit higher deductible, but no office copays. You then have your option three, which is P16, which we project about a $55,000 savings. And then you have the high deductible health plan with the single HSA and a family HSA. If it were fully funded, it'd be around a $63,000 savings. So tonight, you have a resolution. How this will pan out is if the resolution gets passed, we need to pick a, a program, okay? The employee then picks the plan. So they pick within these plans, you pick one program. So you either pick option P12, P14, P16, or P17. They then begin to work on which plan, meaning Dean, Network, Quartz, Robin, WA Trust, which plan do you want? Those are going to be HMO networks. We currently have a broad network. So people, if they want to, in some cases, keep their doctor, they are going to have to pay more. If not, they will have options that increase their contribution, but the overall plan design and sustainability of this program seems to be far better off than current, current trajectory. So we are looking at a resolution to pick a program. We will then submit that to the state. We will continue on acting like we are going to the state health plan. In tandem, we will work with Visance to price out and review other options for healthcare. I do not know if those will be successful. Based on previously last year, it wasn't great. I don't anticipate that switching for us based on some of the claims information and what the state underwrote us at halfway through this year. So we would act like we are moving toward the state health plan, but if we don't get to 65% participation, we will not get in. So we still need to work in tandem on that other, and on the other options outside of the state health plan. And it would be my recommendation, from the standard of, of overall cost, overall plan design, to go with option two, P14. It provides very good coverage and allows us to frankly, be at a level where in future years, we still have room to work, and saves us arguably the most money right off the bat, and is an attractive plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Oh, I was going to make a motion to accept option two, P14.
I'll second that motion.
You moved by Ellen. Second page. Discussion.
The underwriting you were talking about earlier, where they were going to tack on, is that included in this right now? That's already included. So this is going to be pretty solid. I mean, I mean, it goes up every year, but the underwriting is going to go down into every year.
Yeah. So, I mean, if we enter this and they continue to see, you know, when we're seeing 20, you know, 49%, 23%, the state's seeing 8% increase this coming, that's what they're saying, 6% to 10%, so they say go to 8. So, you know, whether the math works out that, okay, next year, there's, say we enter it, the, the, the $800 becomes $400, the $320 becomes $160. That's awesome, because that's a reduction right there. I don't know what it would have to mathematically be of an increase to, to, to gain that back, but I'm assuming not, it's going to have to be pretty significant. But just that, that fall off of that, that surcharge over the next three years sets us in a position where, in my guesstimation, we're at least coming out even every year, which is something we haven't been able to, to obtain in the open market. So one year, pain, second year, a little pain, third year, we're in the table like everybody else.
I just want to note that for the private market, he was calculating a 10%. Anecdotally, I've heard other employers granted in the private market of seeing a 20% to 25% increase again this year over a big increase last year. So the private market probably, in my opinion, is not going to be as low as 10%.
We're obviously hopeful.
We're hopeful.
And we have to start somewhere.
He's hopeful. I'm pessimistic.
I just wonder, how many employees are in the plan statewide? Do you have any idea?
Statewide?
Yes.
Oh, I, I, thousands, you know, so, so from a perspective of, you know, the state, we're talking about everybody that works, you know, at, you know, DNR, DOT, all the way to the UW systems. And then in terms of employee, like cities and villages that are in the state health plan, I would generally say that your healthier, your healthier groups from municipalities are not in the state health plan because they can get better deals on the open market. But that doesn't mean that there aren't a significant amount of people trying to get into this right now, because there are. Because this has become, over time, this was frankly, like the Cadillac Plan is what you would call it. It really was. Like, it was, it was higher-priced. You know, Act 10 kind of chewed into that, you know, at a state level right now. They're in P06, so, so they were at P02 a few years ago, so even the state has, you know, cut the benefit. But overall, I would say, most of the time when, when an employee, like a city enters this, they stay for a while because there is a penalty if you leave. You can't rejoin for like three years. So you have to ensure that if you leave, you better be doing it for a really good deal because you could be back to playing the game of chasing the next, you know, best plan if, if, if indeed you, you see large increases. So it's changed a lot, but I would say, at one point, this was an expensive plan. At this point, it has become a far more viable option for municipalities. Frankly, we should have been here a decade ago.
How many full-time employees and part-time employees do we have that are eligible for city insurance?
64 WRS-eligible employees currently. So we need 65%, which is 42. So it's a, this is just great. But we have 40 that currently are enrolled. We do not know if part-time staff would be interested in joining. We'd have to work out those details. But we went from last year trying to shed people to this year now trying to get them back. And even if that sounds, that sounds bad, like that, but that's, that's with this plan, we need to, we, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel here is even by adding people, we are getting ahead. And, and that, on the other side of things, we need to shed people because it's just costing way too much. So.
And just a note to the city staff that utilize the insurance currently, this may be a more expensive premium, but it's a, in my opinion, a better plan. So it may save you money overall, especially if you go to the doctor regularly. Join.
I think because there's a lot of moving parts and information, I understand why we're being asked to make a decision as obviously city council members, and, and to make sure that, you know, our budget is within that, but making sure that we take care of our folks. No matter which plan we were to vote on, and I understand the motion on the table is, is the one that seems to make the most sense, but outside of this, if folks aren't willing to sign up, it doesn't really matter what we vote on tonight. Would, would it make sense to present this information to all WRS-eligible staff and get feedback from them, and then use that in our decision-making process? Or, I mean, are we under a time?
So I will, I will say there are two things. First is, we have established what's called an employee review board, which has representative from each department that has reviewed the state that has reviewed the state health plan. This happened in June. So we have been talking as a staff that the state health plan was an option with no promises, no specific agenda, or where we're headed with it. That, those individuals on it have been notified of the surcharge amounts and, and as well as department heads. So, you know, in terms of getting, having them have a voice, there has been communication better than in the past, I would say. Uh, getting everybody into a room and talking about this, this is very different. And, and that work will begin once this decision is made, because two, we need to make this decision. We, we don't have time to bring everybody together to have a, what do you think? Because frankly, we may have forty, forty-five, sixty-four people in the room and they may say, we want plan one, I want, I want plan two, I pay this, I pay that. This is a benefit that we are offering our employees, okay? And they have to make a decision after this. And the way the state health plan is structured, and this is very frankly, every pamphlet they put out is called, it's your choice. Because we are picking a program and then they are picking their plan. It is their choice, what they pay, it is their choice, you know, where they go to doctor. And, and that is something very different than what we have done in the past in terms of a plan design. So, uh, moving forward, this forward first is important so we can tell them, A, this is where it's going. And then educating them and getting them on board and getting people to fill out paperwork, open enroll because we're not the only ones doing this right now and we are on a, a race to January first. And we have until November first to rescind this resolution. So if we have to rescind it, we will, uh, and not participate. But we don't, we don't know until we know. And that's where we're working in tandem with stuff.
I think what's helpful is a follow-up to what I was just saying.
Recognized by the mayor.
But I mean, I'm still, my question was, I wanna point out that, sorry, I just wanna say that what was helpful to hear in your answer was that you consulted with the city, um, with, with department heads. It's the first time I heard that, in, in making the recommendation for P fourteen, so in what you just said.
No, we, we didn't make a recommendation of P fourteen. We talked about the state health plan. We talked about moving to the state health plan and here are the four tiers. And we have no idea what it's gonna cost. But, but in terms of the overall plan design, you know, short of the traditional, you know, they're pretty much splitting hairs. I mean, it's really, it's gonna be, either you have a higher deductible or a lower deductible, but you're paying coinsurance, or you're paying an office visit. It's just P fourteen, from an administrative standpoint, this would be the recommendation, um, because of the financial implications as well as the flexibility it provides into the future. So that's why we just.
My, my point is, they are under time constraints and we do have to approve this tonight given the timeline that he gave us for enrollment in the program.
Because November, middle of November, we are live for January one.
Yep.
And that is, and last year, middle of November, scrambling to find a plan. So, yes.
John.
The, um, police officers that are under the union contract, do they keep their regular pre, the contract premium?
So if not called to the floor to renegotiate the contract with the union, they would be under the one hundred and two hundred until the end of their contract. At which time, the state of Wisconsin requires that they adopt the contribution table, minimum twelve percent. So we have two years left under that contract. Um, and, and frankly, we'll see. It's a, it's a gamble. We want to, to go and some of them are probably listening, but, but, uh, they would stay under the current thing and, and, um, so we would have to have that discussion. Um, but at this point, without a change to the, the union, they would stay at their contribution levels in the contract. So.
Good. Okay.
Next question. Um, if we go, if we have to go with a private insurance company, would we keep the old employee contribution that, that one fifty and two hundred or whatever? Or would we end up raising that to the employees?
Without getting into, oh, you know, big specifics about, you know, what happens there, everything like a larger contribution depending on the increase. I mean, if we see a twenty percent increase and we don't have anybody else, we're talking hypothetical now. If we see a twenty percent increase and we have nowhere else to go, how are we going to make it work?
Right.
And, and you bring up the point of added contribution from the employees. I think from this standard, moving to this is an eighty-eight, twelve percent split. And, and I think that would be, you know, um, something we would have to discuss if we get into a really bad spot. So.
I know this probably goes up yearly, you know, a certain percentage, but is it, like you said, maybe eight percent?
Yes, like this year they're saying eight percent. In previous years, it's been five or under.
Okay.
So it's, it's just.
That's not bad.
It's not, you know, in terms of what we're seeing, it's way less.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else?
Here, no one. Uh, the motion on the floor is to approve the resolution under, or inclusion under the Wisconsin Public Employees Group Health Insurance Plan at the P fourteen program level. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you for absorbing all that information.
Sorry for all that information.
Well, just to top it off, we'll have a discussion on the upcoming budget discussion.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to throw that on there 'cause, uh, yep, Amanda's here as well. She'll pass out, um, a quick timeline of what we're thinking for the twenty-twenty-three budget. Um. So we are currently on like the second bullet point there tonight and, yep, I don't even have one. I didn't take one, I'm sorry. Thank you. So basically, um, uh, this year's budget will be a little different in that we do have a finance director, uh, here. So, last year we didn't. Uh, so department worksheets, uh, staff have been provided worksheets. Uh, they gotta get those in to Amanda. Uh, we'll talk tonight. And then, uh, we gotta talk about mostly wage and benefits calculations, obviously based on the P fourteen number and all that. That is sort of the placeholder we are going to use for the twenty-twenty-three budget in terms of wages. Um, I do ask that in September sometime here, that committee and/or department requests or, or, um, you know, anybody that has on like historic preservation, uh, parks and rec, DPW, uh, any, any committees that work, uh, out there, if they have any things they wanna try to get squeezed into the budget, that they bring that forward to us. We'll formalize our capital improvement plan. Obviously, there are some projects that we are working on currently that will go into the budget. Uh, there's just, we can't stop things like the Tigret Street Bridge removal, you know? So things like that will be put in the capital improvement plan. Um, and then we will schedule between, um, the last week of September into the first week of October, a, uh, budget workshop with the council. We'll then, uh, plan to meet again on the regular council meeting, review any updates. Uh, and then again, um, get you the, the final kind of draft preliminary budget ahead of the council meeting on October twenty-fourth, where we will do something a little different than previous years. Um, in the past, uh, administrations just publish the budget. What we will do is a resolution to authorize the summary budget publication. So, um, that's basically saying, um, just a little more oversight from the council saying, you know, we authorize you to set the public hearing and publicize the budget in the paper. Uh, then November eighth, um, we will have our public hearing. Uh, learning from last year, we will have a seven o'clock meeting that night, regular meeting. The public hearing will be at the common council meeting, not ahead of the meeting. So it'll just be a beginning of the meeting, go through it, start the public hearing shortly after the meeting starts. And we will have the adoption of the budget, anything changes, and then the fee schedule. And then, um, obviously taxes go in early December. So that is the general timeline. Um, Amanda, do you have anything to add? Okay. I would say that we.
I'm on the second bullet point, no, I'm good.
Um, I, I would say that we are, um, fine right now in terms of timeline. Um, um, and the, the insurance thing was a big thing. I would like to discuss a little bit about wages and get a, uh, at least a, um, a little consensus on what we put in place for wage increases going into our draft budget. Uh, in previous years, we have always mirrored the union contract, which calls for a three percent increase uh, in wages for the year. Last year, we had started at two, we moved it to three to mirror the union increase. Um, it'd be staff's recommendation at this point to mirror that increase again. Um, and, and move forward with drafting the budget with a three percent wage increase. Um, certainly, I'm open to what other direction from the council on that matter. Um, I know communities are struggling with this just, uh, at this point in time because of, you know, things like cost of living and inflation, uh, so on and so forth. But, um, at this point, in terms of wages, the recommendation, just based on where we are in the budget process and what we are looking at in terms of revenues, three percent is what is being recommended from myself and Amanda in terms of drafting the budget to mirror the union contract.
Howard.
Um, is that up to three percent? As in the past, it was always up to and determined by, um, department head. It wasn't a guaranteed three percent. Are we changing that?
So what I would say is, over the past few years, is I've been made aware, like last year was a three percent across the board, no matter what. It was three percent. There was no, you know, divvying that up amongst employees to get to a total number. It was three percent across the board, three percent.
Cause I know a couple of years ago, it was stated up to three percent. Um, obviously, pretty much everybody got the, the three percent, but that was stipulated back in that time that it was to reward those that earned it. So we're just gonna go with a straight three percent for everybody across the board.
I think, I think you bring up a point that we have to deal with and maybe this is at a different, you know, in terms of how we, how we structure pay raises, because pay for performance is what you're talking about.
That's what we had talked about years ago.
Yeah, and, and I know that had been implemented and from what I've been told, that was implemented with some success. But then it got shelved because there were a lot of unhappy people not getting the three percent or the.
There's also a few department heads that didn't wanna have that pressure put on them and we're not happy about it.
But if we put in the proper, the proper program,
Yep.
then, so, so we have, so yes, we do have, so what happens is we have a step. So basically, you get like entry level, year one, year two, and then year three. And then all those get, you know, the three percent. So just is, the three percent is reflected in that and somebody may be at a year two, they jump to a year three, they get that step and they get the three percent.
That's typically how local government does it.
Yep. So, so that's where we're sort of at. It would just be a three percent. And, and if that's the standard placeholder at this point, we can actually draft a budget because that's the majority of our costs. Is three percent okay? Do we have a?
You want consensus or do you want emotion?
Well, a motion is fine too. Can we do a motion, bud?
We can.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
It's very nice of Bud to.
Budgets update and discussion.
I, I would, I will make a motion that the budget should proceed with the assumption of a three percent increase for employees across the board.
Seconded.
Moved by Ellen, seconded by Howard. Ready discussion on that motion.
Now, if the union comes back and says they're only gonna do a two percent increase, are we saying that as a?
They're already locked in.
The union has a contract set.
We have, we're in year, this will be year, twenty-twenty-three will be year two of a three-year contract.
I would like to say also that our employees provide services. As a local government, we provide services and we should be paying our employees, well, not well, they never get paid well. They should be paid reasonably for their work because we do not make widgets. We provide services.
Yeah, I'll just add to sort of what Ellen was saying, that I think we all know too, that by retaining employees, you save money versus having to hire new employees. So it seems to make sense budget-wise to do what we can to retain good employees.
John.
I think we should stick with the three percent across the board and never go into the territory of a performance bonus or performance extra wages or anything besides that for anybody. I know we've done it in the past, but I don't think we should ever do it ever again, like how he was talking about.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion to proceed with the draft budget, assuming a three percent across the board wage increase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Do you have further budget discussions?
Yeah, why not? Um, beyond that, we are, we are sort of calculating out some things. I did it again. Um, and, you know, how, how are we gonna pay for everything? Great question, right? Yeah. Um, with the net new construction, our net new construction for the year was point six-four percent. Uh, so that'll, that'll allow us to raise our levy by about nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. Our equalized value did increase by five percent. And our TIF, uh, TIFs rebounded after being dipped last year wildly, frankly. I, I don't know why they did do this, but they'll, they'll drop you ten percent. Now they raise us like thirteen percent or raise us thirty-four percent. So all of that is sort of good news from a TIF perspective. The, the, the TIF numbers getting, um, increased again. So overall, uh, from the standpoint of, of equalized value numbers, things are, are going well. But in terms of net new construction, point six-four percent is higher than point four-nine percent. Uh, that was last year. And, and it allows us a little more wiggle room, but, um, if you happen to catch my legal women voters, um, meeting, uh, presentation, we are, we need to grow. I mean, because net new construction is where we, um, are able to increase our levy. And at this point, we are not, um, twenty thousand dollars is not going to, it's gonna help, but it's not gonna be enough. So, uh, so there are continued things that we will work in the budget to, uh, free up, um, resources to accomplish the things, um, we're trying to accomplish. Um, yes, the only other thing is, is Tuesday, November eighth, it happens to also be a very important election, so we will reschedule our public hearing. Thank you. So we will put that on probably the ninth and, um, so that'll change. Uh, Amanda, do you have anything else on the budget? You don't wanna say anything?
No, not really. I have a question.
Yep.
Aren't you closing a couple, aren't we closing a couple TID districts this?
TID four did close, so that is, that is back on.
Okay, that should help.
So, yep, generally that'll help. Um, and then TID five and six will close here, uh, in the next two or three years. That should help as well, um, and, and open up just some ability to do some other things that we're currently plan, in the planning process for.
Data for budget.
Can I mention as a member of Ripon Community Media Committee, since you mentioned the legal voters talk that you did, if folks miss that, and now since you mentioned it, and they wanna see that, it is available on the Ripon Channel's YouTube page.
No, please don't.
It was so well done that the, no one, no one, and it was a big crowd from the league interrupted him. Says something.
I should have came.
I scared him enough, Bud.
I was busy.
Thanks for covering you. I double booked myself. Anyway, all right. That's all we have for the budget right now. We'll continue to chip away at it and, um, get everybody in for a, a budget workshop, uh, when we got it drafted.
All right, uh, moving on then, project updates and staff reports. Adam, you have anything else?
Um, so Mitch is here, um, uh, Um, so Mitch is here. I did have in my report about ambulance service contracts, so one of the things we did do is send that out. So we have had the contract returned by Village of Fairwater, Village of Rosendale, Town of Ebyscom, and Town of Springvale. We are working on Rosendale and Matoman, as well as the Town of Ripon. They would be the three remaining that have not submitted. And we are at the point where if they do not submit their intention to us by September 1st, the next letter to go out is notifying them that January 1st, they will not be served by the Ripon ambulance. So that is a big step to take, but we have had this in their hands for many, many months and have attended meetings. But we need, we have people that are in, we have enough that are in, and those contracts, once we have the consensus of who's in, we will bring that forward to the council for review and approval. But those things, generally, we feel everybody's going to be in by the end of it all. We have completed management internship interviews, so we will start, meet with that individual, the finalist, and finalize that, that position for the upcoming semester. And then, as you read in my report, too, I think Ellen kind of talked a little bit about it, employee handbook revisions, so a lot of the things that we're talking about, whether it's wellness or, or percent increase in contribution to health insurance or pay for performance, a lot of these things should be added to or reflected in our policies, and frankly, our employee handbook has not been updated for over a decade comprehensively. It needs to change to modernize and reflect the operations that are, we are currently doing. So I would welcome any interest on, on some sort of, whether it's a committee or ad hoc, whatever you, whatever, if the mayor wants to set it up, I would just welcome something to build consensus from the council level, administration level, and then present to, to employees and make changes to that document because it is in dire need of review. And we have started that process, but I would rather have it come from a more comprehensive group than just city staff and administration saying, these are the changes that need to occur. That is all I have. Doug?
I would be willing to serve mayor in any ad hoc committee regarding employee policies and procedures.
So it's a whole council?
Yeah.
Just email me, please.
And what timing are you looking for?
It, it, this is going to take some time, so I mean, you know, we're, you know, some things will have to be sooner than later if they need to change for like budget or before, but I mean, the next six months, we would like to have something in place.
Okay, thank you. That all for you?
That is.
All right. Public Works, anything?
No.
Water? EMS? Police? Nothing? All right. That comes down to me. I do have some appointments to make. First one is going to be for historical preser, or Historic Preservation Commission, to appoint Joe Walker to fill a vacated seat with a term ending October 31st, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, John. Paige? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Joe Walker to Historic Preservation Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you. Next, I have two for Parks and Rec. First one is a Daniel Clark. This would be an appointment to fill a vacated seat with a term ending April 30th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Paige, seconded by David. Any discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Daniel Clark to Parks and Rec, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you. And one last one, again for Parks and Rec, Tiffany Millen. This would be an appointment to fill a vacant seat, the term ending April 30th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Howard, seconded by Paige. Any discussion? None. All those in favor of approving Tiffany Millen to Parks and Rec, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you, everyone. I do have part of a letter to share. This was sent to me by a person that was visiting for EAA Air Venture, stayed at Ripon College with a group. Just a portion of the email here. One common comment within our group was how clean and well-kept the town and residences were. We were also very impressed with the citizens' concert in the park and seemingly great care of the infrastructure. Please tell your Public Works crew to keep up the good work, and we look forward to visiting again next year, so. So that's, that's all I have tonight. Is there any questions or comments from council?
Mayor, I know we've had this conversation earlier today, but there are a couple of vacancies in the library board.
Yes.
And so I hope you'll move to begin filling those next month, because there are a number of things the library needs to move forward with, and I think it would be better if we had the vacancies filled as best as possible.
And again, I will put out there to the public, if anyone is interested in serving on this board, please let myself or Adam know. At least, there's two positions, at least one of them, I'm hoping to find someone with either business, accounting, or HR-type experience, just because that is excellent to have on budget time. But like I said, contact myself or Adam, and hopefully we'll have an appointment at the next meeting. So thank you for that. Paige?
I'd like to bring the ATV, UTV routes off of the table and bring it back to council.
All right, thank you.
I think based on my discussion with Adam in August, or July, actually, that we're going to bring that forward in September now.
Oh.
So, and I found someone to untable it, but sure, you can't untable it, too. So I think the procedure is, will we bring it forward next month?
The motion to take it off the table.
We could do a motion, take it off the table, and then someone will second it, you are the other person that I talked with, then we can have another discussion on it.
Okay.
And make some decisions what we want to do with that.
All right. Anyone else?
So for the, those that stayed in the listening audience, what is the date of that council? Adam?
When do we meet? September 13?
13.
No elections?
No elections.
All right.
September 13th.
September 13th.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Paige, seconded by Doug. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hear adjourn at 8:37.